January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, regular, Trotwood regular meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, would you call it well?
Yes, Mrs. Kilgore.
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington.
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry.
Yes. Can we stand for the pledge? Next, we will have our mission statement read by the Trotwood Board. You ready?
The mission of Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere.
Next, on our agenda, um, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as president.
Motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Are there any changes?
Yes, uh, there is one change. Under, uh, number two presentations, we are going to remove the clear closet presentation and postpone that until our next meeting. So I'm asking to, uh, remove that pre- that presentation this evening.
I need a motion to adopt, to adopt the agenda with changes.
A motion that we adopt the agenda with changes.
It's been moved to second. Ms. Allen, would you call it well?
Mrs. Carrington.
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore and Mrs. Cherry.
Yes, motion passes that we adopt the agenda with changes. Item number three is the board report. I need approval of, uh, SB two twenty-nine corrections in special education model in January twenty twenty-five model policy resolution. I need a motion. I'm motion to approve the Senate Bill twenty-nine. Move to second. Ms. Allen, would you please call it well?
Mrs. Carrington.
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes, motion passes. Subject item B, approval of October twenty twenty-four resignation protocol policy resolution. I need a motion.
A motion.
A second.
It's been moved to second. The motion to approve the October twenty twenty-four resignation protocol policy. Ms. Allen, would you call it well?
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington.
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes, the motion passes for the resignation protocol policy. Item number four is the treasurer's report.
I have three, uh, financial reports to present to you today for action. The first one is the cash reconciliation report. Well, let me back up for a second. We did have a finance committee meeting this evening with, and with, uh, Board Member Simmons and Board Member Carrington. Uh, we had, um, Jerry Clayker, who was a guest of ours, um, an as- an aspiring treasurer. He sat in on the meeting with us. So we did review, um, almost twenty reports, but of the twenty reports, there are three that we asked the board to approve. Also, the, um, the entire financial packet is under the executive tab and board tabs for, for, um, the board members and superintendents. So the first, um, report is cash reconciliation for December. Bank statement balances are indicated at three million, two hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. The total investment balance is twenty-four million, five hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. Outstanding checks and adjustments brings the adjusted bank balance to twenty-seven million, eight hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, and that matches exactly to the meta, um, financial system. That's the first report. The second report is, um, comes straight off of the financial system, and that is called spending plan summary. It indicates your monthly actials, uh, for December, as well as the total fiscal year-to-date actials, which is July through December. And, um, I just call attention to the total revenue, total expenditures, line six point oh one, uh, month-to-date. We had, um, the revenue exceeding our expenses by one point eight million dollars. Overall fiscal year-to-date, it flips, and it's, um, negative one point six million dollars we've spent uh, in expenditures over the total revenue. So that is the second report, um, that I would like approval on. And the last report is, uh, all the checks that we cut, oh, checks over a thousand dollars during the month of, um, during the month of December. And, um, there was one question at the finance, uh, meeting about Amerigus healthcare staffing that we cut several checks to for the month of December, and those, um, those checks were cut for intervention and for nursing services for the district. And I would like, uh, an approval, um, for those three reports.
Okay, as we've heard from Ms. Ms. Allen, I need approval of the December twenty twenty-four financial reports.
My second.
Ms. Allen has been moved to second. Can you call the role, please?
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington.
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes, motion passes for the December twenty twenty-four financial reports. And that's all I have under here. Okay. Next on the agenda, item five is the consent agenda. And I need approval of December five, fifth, twenty twenty-four work session meeting minutes, December eleventh, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes in December nineteenth, regular meeting minutes. Come again? Oh, okay. Also, um, approval of the out-of-state overnight field trip to Granville, Michigan for J R O T C on January thirty-first and February first, twenty twenty-five, uh, for the North Central Region Drone Competition, and the out-of-state overnight field trip to Fortmore, Georgia, Georgia on March the fifth through the ninth for the Drone Nationals Competition. Also, approval of the donations from gated properties global.
I'll make the motion for the consent of the agenda and also items, subject items B and C.
And I was second.
Ms. Allen has been second. Can you call the vote, please?
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington.
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes, the motion passes for the consent agenda. Item number six is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Uh, I have two items for approval this evening. The first is the approval of the equipment share company donation. If you click on the, the tab, there is a, um, there is a memo from, uh, Mr. Logan requesting the, uh, donation, requesting the board accepts the donation. The equipment share company located at Two Stratocash Way donated coats and hygiene items of the, for students of Trotwood Madison City Schools. The items will be kept at the Board of Education in the care closet and will be distributed to schools and families when they request assistance on an as-needed basis. I am asking for the board to approve those donations this evening.
So I need approval. I mean, I, I need a motion to approve the equipment share company donation.
I motion that we approve the, approval of the equipment share community donation.
Therefore, this for information.
I, I see information if, if, yeah, that's for information.
It is for information. I apologize. Okay, I thought it said for approval. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, that's, that's okay. Yeah, so we'll, we'll have it on the agenda next, next week for approval. The second item is approval of the personnel agenda. I shared the agenda with, uh, the members of the board last Friday. If you click on the tab, you will see that once again, as we move through the year, uh, we are just, uh, working through adding, uh, additional substitute teachers, additional peer professionals, uh, paying for the science reading training, and, uh, there is a couple of resignations and retirements on the agenda. Asking for approval for that this evening.
As Superintendent Howard, Mr. Howard mentioned that he has already sent the personnel agenda to us for our review. Do you have any questions? I need a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
I motion to approve the personnel agenda.
My second.
It's been moved to second. Ms. Allen, would you call the role?
Mrs. Carrington.
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes, motion passes for the approval of the personnel agenda. Item number seven is discussion items.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. A couple of discussion items that, uh, was, that were asked of me to bring some information to the board. Uh, the first, if you, actually, I'm sorry, if you grab your folder that I provided everyone. The first is a, a graduation update. Uh, got with, uh, I got with Mr. McCray and Mrs. Hague, uh, today over the last couple of days, and they put together a current standing of our graduating seniors for, um, the, the class of twenty twenty-five as of January twenty-third. I don't know if you guys remember the last conversation we had with regards to graduation. We wanted to wait until those second quarter grades were in and the semester had hit. So, um, in the, in your document, your documents, the, uh, the memo labeled A is just a summary of where we are as far as graduation is concerned. Again, the senior count is still at, at two twenty-six. Currently, there are a hundred and seventy seniors that, uh, are either, uh, ha- that have either completed the requirements for graduation or need just a few additional courses, and there are about fifty-six that are working towards getting that support to, to get over that line. And they've also identified the means of communication with those seniors and their parents, and als- also talk, also in the, uh, in the, the second bullet, it talks about or discusses the, the additional pathways. And we talked about those alternative pathways a little bit, uh, a little bit earlier in the year. So, um, as this list continues to get updated, I will share with the board where we are and how we are progressing, how the seniors are progressing on getting themselves to that, uh, to that finish line. Any questions on graduation?
Is this more than are on, not on track than it was last year? It seems like this number is bigger.
I.
If I recall.
I can't remember specifically, and, and I, I don't, Mr. McCray, do you?
Less.
Less. Right.
Oh, okay.
Right, it was. So that's progress. That's progress. And again, those fifty-six seniors, and, and if you remember last year, there were about ninety, and I think the majority of them made it too. So, you know, we are, we are working diligently. The high school staff is working diligently to, to get that, that group of, uh, that group of seniors that are, that are lacking over that, over that hurdle in your program there, so.
Got it.
Right. Any more questions? And, and we'll continue to up, continue to update this information. I'll probably try to update it third quarter, once we complete this quarter. Just give you some more information. Item B, uh, Mrs. Cherry, President Cherry asked for some information with regards to, uh, Five Rivers, the Five Rivers Health Center. And with that, I thought it was a, um, a prime opportunity to share with our new board members and some that have been here that may not know, uh, we do have a, a school-based health center onsite here in the district. Memo B kind of outlines what Five Rivers does with, uh, with regards to providing health services to, to, uh, the community. It's just not school. It's, uh, it's just not for school. It's also for the community. And, uh, they do provide a variety of different services. Now, uh, currently where we are, we are trying to actively engage with Five Rivers to try to forecast where we, uh, where we are now and, and, and ultimately where we're going to go, forecast where we're going to go with this, with this partnership. There have been some hurdles with maintaining, uh, maintaining Five Rivers as, as a partner, specifically just the, the, the number of bodies that they see. When, uh, when we started this, this, um, this venture several years ago, I believe Five Rivers was four days a week. Now, I think they're all the way down to one day a week, one day a week on Tuesday. And our biggest, you know, issue would, uh, would, would, would probably be the, um, the right term, from, from, from my perspective, is just the lack of foot traffic. Uh, you know, Five Rivers and, and, and the district, we, we partnered in, in this, in this venture to try to make this a community hub for a lot of variety, variety, a lot of different health-related issues. And we have just not seen the foot traffic, and I think a lot of that has some, something to do with the location where we are. You know, if we were a little closer to the main campus, we could, you know, we could definitely provide, you know, more ser- opportunities for service, but the fact that there's no bus line out here anymore, we're struggling with trying to, uh, trying to provide the, the bodies that they need to, to maintain. So, we're going to engage in some dialogue. They have changed, um, general manage, general managers, so we're, we're trying to find out who the new P O C for Five Rivers is, and Miss, Mrs. Mallory has been diligent as long as, uh, with, um, with our, with our nurse, our district nurse, to try to re-engage in this conversation. Now, as of right now, they're still here every Tuesday. But, uh, we don't, you know, we don't anticipate them leaving, but we really got, we, we really have to do, you know, do some due diligence to try to continue to, uh, help this partnership thrive, because it is a benefit to our community. I mean, it's a, it's a school-based health center. Folks can come in and, and, you know, kids can come in. They, there's a dentist back there. There's an eye doctor back there. There's a general practitioner back there. But, you know, just like any business, you know, they function on being able to, to, to turn a profit in a sense.
What mode of advertisement have we tried?
We have done everything over the last three or four years with Five Rivers, and that's, that's why I provided the information, because I, I know some of you are just, uh, just coming to the board and, and don't, maybe don't have a lot of history. But we have done so many things to try to promote Five Rivers, and, and I think our, again, our biggest hurdle is we're just kind of off the beaten path. And, you know, when parents are, when parents are looking for providers for their kids, you know, whether it falls under, you know, under whatever health insurance they have, whether it falls under, you know, Medicaid, whether it falls under, you know, whatever type of health insurance they have, you know, this, you know, this entity has kind of been a second thought. We've, we've allowed them to set up in our, in our, uh, our open houses, our back-to-school bash. Anytime we have parent-teacher conferences, they have a table, and we, we're still just not seeing the foot traffic. So our hope is to re- again, re-engage with them to try some, some different strategies, but I don't know, you know, and I'm trying to be transpa- as transparent as possible, you know, because there's a lot of money that was expended back there. There was a, there was a, you know, a big, a, a big push for this, uh, and they just haven't seen the foot traffic. And if it's not fiscally sustain- uh, sustainable for them, then, you know, and we haven't had that conversation yet. We haven't had that conversation yet. But cutting from four days to one, you know, you know, what's next?
So if it's not, um, parent, uh, I think you said transportation might be a hindrance. Have we tried days of going into some of the buildings?
Well, they don't go into the building because they're all here. Now, transportation for, from our standpoint.
I'm saying parents can't get here. So have we tried Five Rivers going into, sort of like at the beginning of the year for physicals, for mobile or something out front?
Right. We, they have not. And when I say, when I say they.
Five Rivers.
Yeah, they have not. They, they are, are, are sending back here. They, you know, all of their equipment and everything is back here. Now, from our standpoint, we have, we've used Five Rivers for, for student physicals, athletics. We've used them for, uh, if a kid, if, if a student gets, gets sick and their parents sign off on the, on the, uh, on the, I don't know, not waiver, but the agreement, the consent form, yeah, that's correct. We've, we've even gone and got some kids and brought them over here, but I believe Five Rivers thought the community was going to use the facility more. And I just, I just don't believe that they have, they, they haven't seen enough of that foot traffic, and I, and I think that's, that's kind of contentious. And, you know, it, it's hard, especially if you're not, if you're not on the bus line again. And we had that, that conversation prior to, um, prior to, you know, the development of the facility, and, uh, I don't know, just, it's just never, it's never formalized like, you know.
Do they have mobile, mobile capabilities?
They do not here. And I'm, and I'm looking at Ms. Mallory, because Ms. Mallory and I were together along the way with this, you know, this Five Rivers thing was five or six years in the making. Um, what they do do is, you know, if, if you know anything about Five Rivers, they have several, several locations throughout the, uh, throughout the city of Dayton and Montgomery County. So they will send, if, if someone needs a physical, if someone needs a, uh, a, a test done, they will send folks here. So there are times where people come from, you know, other locations, and they come here. Sometimes they, they end up at our front door. We have to redirect them all the way around. But as far as mobility, I don't, I don't believe they have anything, anything like that where they bring people in. I think it just relies on all of individual transportation.
What would you say the percentage of students, um, utilize Five Rivers to the athletic department as far as physicals and stuff like that, just for the, just for the students for athletics?
I, I would, I wouldn't say it's, it's ma- maybe five or ten percent.
Okay.
You know, uh, be- because, uh, again, a lot of, a lot of the kids, you know, they, they get those physicals when they go to their general practitioners, or they, you know, or they, they can go to an urgent care. We've set up physicals with, with, uh, Five Rivers and had kids sign up, and, you know, we may have gotten ten or fifteen or so that come over here, but, yeah, it, it, it's not a, it's not a huge percentage.
So how often is the dentist there? Because I have a lot of families that are looking for child pediatric dentists, and there's no availability. So if this, what days?
Is it Tuesday too? Yeah, it's, it's Tuesday for a year.
This may affect Rivers, and they can't get appointments through that. So I do it all the time with my clients from day to day. It would help me grow. They're, I mean, it's, they're, they're scheduled so far out, so.
But it is Tuesday.
Can we invite them to a meeting so?
Like a year, six months.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, and it's just not our, our site that they're having issues with. It's, you know, Mrs. Carrington says something. I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, can we invite them to a meeting, a board meeting, so maybe they can do a presentation and we can ask all the questions?
Sure, you know, they've, you, you know, first we got to figure out who, who, who are.
Right.
Who are point of contact. Has they changed, you know, when we first started, they had, um, they had some consistency. But, uh, we, we just don't know who it is now. But yeah, we, we can, because, and they, they have presentation prepared, because they've done it two or three times here. So, yeah.
Have they, and they've done presentations in each building?
Yeah. Each building, they've been to every.
This been here.
Every, um, every, um, open house. We had an open house here, as a matter of fact. We had an open house here. We invited, we invited every family in the district, and we had very few, very, very few people show up. You know, when you, you know, and, and just, you know, from a practical standpoint, when you start talking about medical care and, and the relationship to a school, you know, some people are, are private when it comes to that, and, and, you know, we, we have not found the, the recipe to make this work yet. Do much better, sure. Right. So we're not giving up. We're not giving up. We're going to, uh, we're going to continue to try to, uh, work with Five Rivers. But again, ultimately, you know, being, you know, being, being transparent, as I stated before, you know, it, it comes down to a, it comes down to a funding thing. And, uh, we're hoping that we can, you know, we can, we can make it work. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, those are the two updates, discussion items that I, that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Okay, no problem.
Next on the agenda is item number eight, which is the treasurer comments.
I had a couple of comments. I'm again welcome to Gary Clayker, who's been shadowing me, uh, for the last couple of weeks. He's from, he's a math teacher at Northridge and, um, wants to become, transition to become a treasurer. So he reached out to me a month or so ago and asked me to come, um, by a couple of times a week just to sit down and, and see some of the things that I go through today. He actually sat in on my finance meeting. I also wanted to just extend my condolences to our former board member, Craig Anderson, who lost his brother. I also wanted to extend my prayers to everyone that lost individuals' devices this year. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Item number nine, superintendent comments.
I do have a few things, uh, for, for the board. Uh, we'll start with document labeled C in your, um, in your folder. This is a, a summary of the, um, the expectation for online learning day plans, and, and I shared this with the board because I know where there was some, some casual discussion with, uh, with regards to what does an online learning day look like, or why have we not been able to do online learning days? And just not, you know, not amongst the board, but, but just in general. So after COVID, the, uh, and then I'll, I'll be looking at Ms. Murdoch too, and she'll be able to chime in and provide any, uh, additional details. After COVID, the Ohio Department of Education, now the Ohio Department of Education and workforce came out with some different guidelines with regards to how online learning days have to be structured. There have to be, there has to be a, a formal plan, a formal outline, and there are a lot of, uh, requirements that, that school districts are responsible for to ensure that they have a, a solid plan in place. With, uh, with COVID, what I believe what the Ohio Department of Education saw is just a lot of, you know, kind of wishy-washy things and just calling the online learning day, and kids were, you know, either on their phones or, or doing a lot of, you know, things that were not related to, to, to school, and districts would call them online learning days and, and, and not be, uh, penalized for, you know, for those hours that kids missed. Well, O D E W came in with something different, and as of right now, uh, you know, our district de- doesn't have a formal plan after COVID because we, we could not address all of the needs, and most districts don't. Uh, and you, you see some on, uh, you see some on, on, uh, on the news or where it says online learning plans and, you, you know, or remote learning, and we believe that, and, and not, and it's not that we believe, but we actually know that the majority of those districts have not filed a valid online pla- learning plan with the state of Ohio. There used to be a, um, an option with, uh, There used to be a, um, an option with, uh, with these days where, where you could have what they used to call blizzard bags. And you had a blizzard bag and you can send all this, this, this stuff home with kids. Ohio Department of Education has eliminated that. So what we're gonna do for next year, and, and there's also, you know, and, and I wanna, the, the small caveat to this is. There's also some language in our contract that we have to work through with, uh, T M E A. Because as we move along, you know, in the future, especially when you get to, you know, where we are now, I believe we're at five days. Five days of, of missed school. Once you hit, we believe eight, now we're trying to, we're trying to make sure that that, that number is, is correct. Once you hit eight days, based upon the number of hours, eight days is equitable to a certain amount of hours that kids have missed. So after eight days, we then have to have a contingency in place to start making up those hours that students have missed. So we're at day five now and we're just really in the middle of winter. And the way, you know, this winter looks, we've been spoiled over the last several years, last couple of years. And, and we've had some real, real, you know, kind of soft winters, but this winter is, is, is hitting us in the gut right now. So we, we have to develop a contingency plan after eight days. What we're gonna do if, you know, if we hit that mark. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna confirm that eight days is the number. But, uh, we believe that eight days is that number for hours. But what we are also gonna do is we are gonna work diligently in the summer to try to put together a online learning plan to, to meet all of the requirements, uh, from the, uh, from the state of Ohio. So that, you know, if we do run into, you know, to these situations again, to this situation again, that we, we're a little better prepared. But this is not uncommon to most districts in the state. As you can see, it was, you know, the end of 2023 where, where all this came about and, and. People believed, districts believed that, oh, we could just say it's an online learning day. And then not meet these, not meet these requirements and then find out that, that those days do not actually, actually count. So our plan is to put this in place, but also we are, we are diligently working on the contingency if we do hit, if we do hit eight days. Okay? Okay, the second, uh, item I have for you is, is identified as, uh, D. This is a, just some general information. The Montgomery County E S C is providing a board member institute for new and current board members. If you are interested in going, it is going to be February first. And it will start at eight o'clock and then roughly run to about two or two fifteen. If you are interested, all you have to do is just let me know. I have already R S V P'd everyone. But just letting, uh, letting the folks down at the E S C know that everyone, you know, will likely not be there, but I just gave them all of the board members' names. So if you get something in your inbox from the E S C with regards to this, that's because I simply, uh, just put everyone's name in. But the topics, uh, will include the sunshine law, uh, levy dues and dotes, board policy, use of social media, relationships with P T Os, boosters in the union and much more. Always kind of been informational. I think maybe Ms. Cherry has been before, uh, so, you know, if you're, I'm, I'm on the Miss Curran, if you go, yeah. So if you're interested in, in going, just, uh, just let me know and then, uh, I will, I will share with the, uh, the E S C who's gonna be attending. Alright? The, um, last item I have in your folder is item E. You noted on your memo, your document, is the 2025 Business Advisory Council Annual Dinner. So as I'm making my way through this superintendency, I was informed that we need to have, uh, representation at the, uh, Business Advisory Council. The Business Advisory Council is a, a partnership between, uh. Educational entities and business leaders in the community. And there are some, uh, state requirements that we are responsible to, to, uh. That we are, excuse me, that we are responsible for. We work our Business Advisory Council through the E S C, through the Educational Service Center. And they have a dinner every year that, uh, myself and at least one board member has to attend. I know Ms. Cherry went last year and I just wanted to put that out there if anyone is interested in attending. Mr. Lumpkin went last year too? Oh, okay. Okay, so everybody went. Oh, okay. Alright, well, I wasn't there, so I didn't know. So if you, uh, if you want to attend, just let me know. The, the date is the, yeah, the nineteenth of February. And it's at the, the Marriott from five thirty until eight P M. Alright, so just let me know if you're interested in not getting R S V P'd. Alright. And then the, you know, the last thing I have is, uh, you know, from, from just a, you know, a, a note. Personally, administratively, and, uh, you know, just heartfelt. You know, we, we are all in a, uh, in a point right now. We are, we are trying to, uh, just come to grips with some of the trauma that, uh, that our high school has dealt with over the last couple of days. Uh, I got several phone calls starting, uh, Monday afternoon, um, informing me that, you know, we lost a student. And then I got another phone call that we lost another student. And then I got another phone call today. Well, yesterday that a student was, uh, in critical condition and, uh, we found out we lost him this morning. All due to, uh, due to gun violence, you know, not specifically what, uh, you know, what happened. Because, you know, they're still working out the details and the families, you know, uh, deserve their, their, their privacy rights. But, um, you know, it's, it, it's very clear that, you know, we live in a world where, uh, you know, young people make decisions. And a lot of times they don't think about the consequences. And there are a lot of things out there that, um, you know, we have to understand that. You know, people are, you know, people are really, you know, they're really hurting. And our kids are hurting. And some of our kids are hurting specifically. And I, I wanna commend Ms. Mallory and, uh, and, and her team. I think we had maybe ten or twelve, um, support staff over at the high school today and Mr. McCray, uh, and, and his team. And I walked by this morning and there were two or three kids in there just kind of grieving a little bit, talking about, uh, some of the, uh, you know, some of the issues and some of the things that they were feeling. And, uh, you know, on behalf of the district, you know, we, we send a, uh, very, uh, you know, very sincere and, and, and heartfelt regret to these families. And we're gonna reach out, we're gonna, uh, figure out how we can support them. And, uh, we're gonna work with our, try with the police department to see if there's anything we can do from the standpoint of education. To, uh, try to, uh, you know, put some, embed some education in, uh, you know, in, in, in our community with regards to, you know, with regards to, 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 uh. It's a sad situation, you know, we've got three lives of people whose, whose world was just beginning that were lost. And, uh, you know, I just wanna let the board know that we are, we are working through it and, and, uh, and hopefully we'll, you know, we'll come out with a brighter day on, uh, you know, on this situation. But, you know, you'll, you'll never, well, those parents, those families, they'll, you know, they're, what they're going through is unimaginable. But, uh, we definitely wanna make sure everybody understands we're, you know, we're here to support them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Item number 10, we have board comments. And, um, tonight, we're gonna start with Mrs. Curran. Um, I just wanna. Piggyback off of what, um, Treasurer Allen said and Mr. Howard. You know some of these families personally and the, you know, the students personally. And it's, it's just, it's devastating. And, um, I'd like to send a heartfelt prayer out to the families, to our students, to the staff, to our community. Trotwood is a, it's a peculiar community because we, we're close. If you know somebody or don't know them, you, we are really a close knit community. And this, the last couple of days have been devastating. Um, to say the least. So thank you for, to you and your staff who got out to try to reach our children and give them the care that they need during this time. And on a, on a different note, last Friday, I got a chance to go to the, um, district leadership meeting, team meeting. And what I saw in that meeting was so phenomenal. You did an excellent job facilitating the meeting, Mr. Manley. And just to see how everybody was so engaged. And everybody had the same agenda to try to figure out what's gonna be best for our students. I, I wa- I was just overju- I was overjoyed. I was so glad that I stopped in. And I just wanna say thank you guys for the work that you do behind the scenes because it's important. And, um, we, it's really appreciated. To see you guys working hard to move the needle, I was really, I was amazed. And so I, I was glad that I had a chance to sit in on, on that meeting. And then also glad that I had a chance to sit on a policy committee meeting with, uh, Ms. Mallory, Board Member Kilgore and Treasurer Allen. It, it's a lot. It, this is, this is not for the faint, it, it's, it's a lot. And, um, it's, I'm just, I'm just happy and I'm just. Ready to just dig in and learn and to just do my part to help our district. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Constance. Next, Mrs. Kilgore.
Um, I received a very heartfelt warm welcoming from board, the district, uh, several teachers, uh, who joined, uh, the board of education. So I'm very excited. It, it feels like I started, uh, right off the board meeting with, uh, the policy meeting. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Mallory and, uh, Yvanna, so lots of information. I do have an upcoming conference, I think it's a workshop in the O S B A Saturday. So I'm looking forward to that, learning, uh, more about board members too. And, uh, this, today was the first time I heard about the, the loss of a student. So, um, just wanna send out prayers to the families. It's a lot. I have children, young children myself that in high school, so, um, it's very unfortunate. Some of the things that happen with my children in their young life, it's very long for the family. I think it's a sympathy and condolences.
Thank you. Mr. Lumpkin?
So just condolences to the families that are going through the tragedy that we have here. A word of encouragement for our educators and our teachers that have to help our students deal with those kind of things. Just know that we pray and keep you in prayer as well because you know how tough of a conversation that is. And then parents that have kids that, I have teenagers in my house, and just, just listen to them. Uh, when you're having these conversations with them, listen to them. And, um, remember that even in death, it's our responsibility to, um, to protect our students. So if you're out there and you wanna talk about the things that are going on, don't. Give the families that, um, that respect to not have to read about something that's going on in a situation that's unthinkable, unthinkable and unimaginable for anyone. Just, just don't. So prayers to the district, prayers to Troywood. And, um, like anything else, we're, we're all gonna come together and we're gonna get through it. But we do understand, you know, how, how tough that can be for staff and, and administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. Vice President Simmons?
Just ditto what all of my, um, fellow board members have said. Um, Mr. Howard, uh, Mr. McCray, I said a special prayer for you this morning. Uh, Ms. Mallory, thank you for your, and your team being on the ground with those students. Um, cause not only will this affect the students, but I'm sure it affects the staff just as well and all of those families. So my condolences, um, the support won't stop today. Um, these families will need us far past today, um, and tomorrow. So let's remember that. Um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Well, that just leaves me. Um, the community has truly, truly suffered, um, a great loss, um, losses from our students. It's, it's a tragedy. Um, I wanna thank, um, the high school, the counselors and everyone, uh, for the resources available to our students. Just be mindful that we don't know what some of our kids face prior to coming to school. So you, you never judge a book by its cover, but, um, we, I, I really appreciate you all being there for the students. And like Mr. Lumpkin says, listen to the students. Um, it, it's just such a loss. I'm devastated. Because like Mrs. Curran said, one of the students I'm close with the family and. It's, it's really devastating. It's, it's really devastating. But like, um, Vice President said, we are gonna need additional resources and ongoing resources past today. Um, I appreciate everything that everyone does and is doing. Like I said, it's just a, a tragic loss. Um, and be careful what you read on social media because that's not always factual. And I would encourage people to not spread things that are not factual. So once again, for those who are listening, we are sending our condolences from the school board and from the district to the families. Please respect the families. Um, and once we know any details, uh, maybe we can reach out and support the family additionally. And that's all I have. With that being said, I need a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee official license fee. Or regulated individual per P O E policy zero one six six and O R C one two one point two two. Action may be taken.
Motion?
A second.
It's been properly moved as second, and we will enter into executive session at six seventeen.